I just turned by, I didn't really pay attention to this call.
Okay, it's alright. Um, catch up or see it on the.
I wonder if you forgot we were starting at six.
No, you didn't. Okay, well, I'm gonna call media to order that, please.
United States of America. To the public for whose space, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose justice is wrong.
We're gonna start with our training today. So where are your students?
Alright, I assume everybody here has a copy of the ordinance. I just wanna go through it briefly, each section, give an overview of what it is. So, if you first open it up, you've got the table of contents, that's really, really standard. The first section, Article One, General Provisions, that's a lot of general language, a lot of language basically saying, this is why we're connecting this ordinance, this is the authority in which we have to connect it, and things of that nature there. And then there's also the main portion of that that you would find useful is the waivers section. So anytime somebody comes in and they feel like the ordinance is prohibitive, that they can't do what they need to do, and they have an option that's better than what the ordinance provides, then it grants you the ability to grant a waiver. So that it's not, every project has to be exactly the same. Because each project really does have some site-specific constraints that you may need to give a waiver for that makes sense.
You mean for, for there's underwritten conditions on a particular site that makes it difficult or impossible for him to do what he's supposed to do?
Correct, yep. And it identifies what the process is for those waivers. You generally have to submit a letter requesting the waiver, what the specific section is that you're requesting the waiver from, why, and what your alternative is.
And that can come from the property owner, that necessarily.
Correct, it can come from anybody.
Okay.
And then the engineer would typically review it, make a recommendation to council to approve or deny it. Ultimately, it's really your decision regardless of what my recommendation is. And then we've got Article.
I turned you up a little bit because I couldn't hear you. I don't wanna give feedback either.
Alright, Article Two is Definitions. That's, that's something that's in every ordinance that you have, and it just goes over the specific things for that particular ordinance. These came mostly directly from DEP, so it defines impervious earth disturbance, things of that nature, so that there's no ambiguity when somebody reads this, they can go, you know, this is why, this is what it means for this particular ordinance. And then Section Three, Section 301, General Requirements. So these are gonna be your general standards for stormwater management capture. It identifies the way in which you're going through and modeling the pre-development and the post-development, and what's required there. Section 302 is Exemptions and Modified Requirements. Exemptions are gonna be anything less than 240 square feet, or in the case of agriculture or replacement of existing impervious, there's a couple different things in there that can be exempt. Modified requirements is gonna be anything that's a smaller project but not a major project. So I believe that that number here is on, it's on Section H, Modified Requirements, up to 2,500 square feet of impervious, which is a significant amount. You can install a pool, a large deck, and not have to have an engineer involved. And that's really what that purpose is, that section is for. If you look on Section, Table 302, that outlines the activities or the articles that apply to each activity. So if it's exempt, you really don't have to do anything. If you have the modified, then it tells you where in there that you're required to meet those sections. Table 302 is, again, the modified, it tells you what provisions apply and what are exempt, as long as you follow that minor stormwater plan procedure. If I need, feel free to ask questions. I mean, if you've read through this, if you have any specific questions, feel free to stop me and ask those. Section 304, Infiltration Requirements. The state requires that any stormwater plans that go through that are not the minor plans have to show a minimum amount of impervious, of infiltration. That's where this is coming from. There are ways to, this would be one of those sections that would get waived more likely if you have karst geology, or you have an area that has high groundwater and it's impossible to infiltrate. This would be an area that could potentially get a waiver.
Soil types too?
Yep, soil types absolutely play a part in that. Section 305 is the Stream Channel Protection. You're not likely to run into this much, because it's only for projects that are greater than one acre of disturbance. This basically just follows the NPDS, National Plute Discharge Elimination System Permit, that's required by the United States. Both the state and the country require an NPDS permit. So this really just mimics that. With the amount of free land you have here in the borough, you're not likely to see any projects that actually fall into that, but it's required to have it in the ordinance. Rate controls, that gives your engineer the rates in which the pre- and post-development needs to meet, so that when they go through the design, they know what their requirements And the same thing with Section 307, that's calculation methodology, that goes over whether you wanna use the rational method or the SCS method. Those are two different options for how to calculate the water runoff. Chapter, Section 309 is Right Period Buffer. A right period buffer is an area above the stream bank that you wanna keep vegetated, trees and vegetation helps slow the water down, helps to minimize flooding, and it helps minimize erosion. That's what that section is discussing. Section 310 is Permits from Other Entities. That just says that if you have an append out permit, that's required, they have to do it, same thing with the state for an NPDS permit or an ENS permit, things like that. Section 400 goes over Plan Requirements. So this tells the individual what their plan has to show on it, has to show the north arrow, has to show the scale, a location map, things of that nature. Every plan that comes before you is a very similar layout, so you can understand what is being done there.
And these requirements are separate from maybe what the Conservation District would require?
That's, that's correct, yes. The Conservation District typically has notes and things like that, that they require on every sort of plans, and that's above and beyond what's in right in your ordinance. Article Five is Operation Maintenance. That gives the ability for the borough to regulate how the stormwater facilities are maintained. Anytime that somebody comes through with a plan for a stormwater plan, they would have to record an operation and maintenance agreement, which says, this is how they're going to maintain it, this is the frequency in which they're going to maintain it, how often they're gonna inspect it. And it also gives easements for the borough to come in and check those facilities, so that you have some ability to enforce action when somebody neglects their facilities. Article Six is Fees and Expenses. That just identifies what the fees are for submission of permits. It gives the opportunity for the municipality to get an escrow to cover costs for third-party engineers or third-party solicitor reviews, so that you're not paying for a developer's Article Seven is Prohibited Discharges and Connections. This is a requirement of the MS Four permit. It basically says that you can't discharge certain things within the storm sewers, so you can't discharge chlorinated water down a storm drain, or you can't let oil go down a storm drain, things, things like that.
Like a swimming pool discharge, empty your pool.
If you empty your pool, it has to go over a grass area, can't go into a storm, storm drain.
Would this be for something about car washing would go in?
Yes. I, that is the one hot topic, but yes, this is where that would go in.
I've already gotten a few questions about that.
Yeah, me too.
That's actually, Section 701(c)(7), Residential Vehicle Wash Water Where Cleaning Agents Are Not Utilized, is it allowed discharge?
Washing with water?
Correct, just water.
What if you wash it in your backyard?
As long as you're doing it, as long as it's not going into the storm sewer system, it's not an illegal act. If it's done in your yard, or if your driveway slopes to your yard, but it can't go from your driveway into the streets, into the storm gutters, storm sewers, that's where it's an illegal activity.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be tough.
It's, it's tough everywhere.
Geez. Do most places really enforce that? Do we have, I mean, is it something?
It's one of those.
Come ask these questions. I mean, if DEP comes in sometime and they see somebody washing their car, can they come back to us?
So, in my experience, most municipalities do not have somebody actively going out and looking for these issues. It's mostly on a reported case. So if somebody's got a neighbor that's doing it, and they report it, you are required at that point to enforce. Now, what most municipalities do to keep in compliance with their MS Four is to use educational materials and public outreach, hand that stuff out. If somebody's reported of doing it, usually the first time is a warning, you're just saying, hey, you can't do this, this is why, you document it, and then you submit it with your MS Four report. If it's a continuous thing that continues to go on, then you can end up submitting a cease and desist letter, notice of violation, then it will go before the municipal or the court.
And we basically blame the state for this, right?
Yeah, well, it's, it's true, and it's, it's a Chesapeake Bay watershed.
It's not something that we did to make your life miserable, it's.
It sounds like a, one of the first things to go in the first newsletter, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be where it's near to know.
Are we required to do so much training, or it's just to our benefit to do so much training?
Once you're in the MS Four program, you're required to do so much.
And newsletters would count as that?
They can, they are a type of, of training, public outreach and things like that.
Who is the, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question? It's just, if I wanna change the oil in my car, okay, now, if I, you know, most of the time you would have pans and.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I, because a lot of times I do my own stuff like that, if it's something.
Sure.
What, how, now, what would, what would happen there? What would you have to do? Because I put it in a container, and then I take it to a place that disposes of it, as I, because I collect it up and, so.
Well, I guess as long as it's not.
Yeah, as long as you don't drain it on, on the ground or on the.
Yeah, if you're catching it in a container and taking it somewhere to dispose of, that's not a violation at all. The issue is if you pour it down a storm drain, or if you have a spill, you have to get that oil.
Oil dry.
Sure, dry, yes, and probably dispose of it that way.
I get it, yeah.
I know a lot of people that do. Any other questions?
Just generally, if you're a proprietor and you're gonna do some improvement that's gonna result in an impervious surface, when does the proprietor need, generally, but when is the proprietor needing an engineer involved, and when can they do the, do this themselves based on reading the ordinance and say, okay, I'm just an assumption to the borough, and I don't need to have a PEC alarm?
Yeah, so if you have 240 square feet of impervious or less, it's an exemption. It's literally just one form that they just sign off on, they don't have to do anything else beyond that once the borough issues the permit. If it's up to 2,500 square feet, 2,500, they do not need a engineer's seal. It's just they can use the simplified method, which is in the back of this ordinance, it's, I believe, Appendix B or C, no, Appendix A, sorry. And it gives you the method in which they can capture the storm water, and then, actually has the permit application in there as well.
So it's like if somebody built an house, had something to build it to do, or the property.
Yeah, they could. Most houses, when you build an empty lot, are gonna be over 2,500 because you've got the driveway to include in that, sheds, decks, things like that. But a developer that builds a house would know how to, they typically have an engineer on staff to do that.
702, Roof Drains, is that what I think it is? Your downspout from your house?
Yes.
We have several old houses that they go, there's a hole in the concrete, and it goes right out into the street.
Yes, so this is, this is straight from DEP, their language, but the key word here is, roof drains and cell pumps shall discharge to infiltration or vegetated BMPs where feasible. An existing one, I don't think is feasible to change.
Grandfathered.
It's grandfathered. For new ones, it would require them to discharge into vegetated areas.
Yeah, because I was, the next question I was gonna say is, you know, like, if you collect rainwater, like, for your, for plants and things like that, actually, how, under this, how would you have to handle that? Would you have to have some particular way of storing that, or?
No, nothing, you know? Nothing for, for collecting rainwater.
Is that in here? You're only allowed to, it can't overflow or something? Did I read that in here? Collection of rainwater, it can be in a barrel, but the barrel has to be sealed.
I don't think so.
Was that in here, or was I reading that someplace?
I don't.
No, it's Survivor.
Oh.
Green, gray, survival.
I mean, it's better if it's sealed, so you don't have to worry about mosquitoes, but it's.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, because I was wondering just how they'd handle that, because I know that was an issue in different areas, you read about it in newspapers, you know, and all the stuff that was, and I was just kinda curious how you could handle that, because that, but that would, but you're right, that would be the way to do that, would be to seal it off against the mosquitoes, because that's one thing you will get quick.
Yeah.
What are our requirements going to be for the seepage pits that are already installed? And, I mean, I've been in my house 21, 22 years, and I've never inspected my seepage pit.
Yeah, so anytime you have.
Cause I shouldn't strike.
Yeah, anytime you have a new ordinance like this, it does not retroactively make somebody else do something that they already wouldn't have been able to do. So you're not gonna be able to force somebody going back and doing an inspection on something if they don't have an operation and maintenance agreement for, or an easement agreement for that, you just simply don't have those agreements in place, so it's grandfathered.
When you say seepage pit, you're talking about like your downspouts?
Yeah, your, your downspouts run into a seepage pit.
See, I don't, I have it, but I don't even know where it is. I have no idea where it is, but I know my downspouts go into a terracotta. I, I have no idea where that pit is.
Most people, like, if your house has at least been sold once, you probably don't really know where it is.
Yeah, 110 years old, hundreds of years.
It does talk about rain barrels from page five on, gift charts on it.
I thought I saw that section.
Okay, this is actually in the Modified Requirement Section.
It goes on with pictures up down to page 18, 19, 20.
I will say, in the other municipalities that I work in, rain barrels are very seldom used for stormwater capture. The reason being, you put in a modified project, generally, the rain barrels aren't big enough to capture the water that's needed for that. Most people use the underground infiltration bed, which is just a gravel bed underneath a seepage bed, essentially. That's the cheapest option in most cases to install.
Do you want to have anything else?
Now, who does enforcement? The borough?
The borough.
Does that take special training, or certification to?
Yes, so it's up to the borough who they want to do their enforcement. I've seen codes officials do it, I've seen the engineer do it, it really is dependent on what, what you're looking for.
What is involved? I mean, is there a certification requirement?
There is none.
They just kinda go online and, or follow this?
As long as you follow this. Now, you do have to have an engineer to review plans and things like that, but as far as enforcement for the prohibited discharges and complaints, that doesn't have to be an engineer.
These all, every, always have to be kept unfiled for the borough, get the borough, right?
Yes.
Any kind of new property, not new property, any new, uh, property, even if it's exempted, they hit the file something?
Yeah. Most times, the code official.
Yeah.
Most times, the code official's the best one to review all that, because, like, we would know when a project's been done on a property years ago, or it's somebody else that's just outside of it.
Good thing is, we already record the ordinance, so it would be a simple modification to say, probably the adoption on how much impervious has been added, to really track that going forward.
I guess my major question is, why are we doing this? That might sound stupid, but why are we required to do this, or we can? There's a couple reasons, I'll, go ahead and I'll follow up.
Yeah, so when you are eventually required to join the MS Four permit, this would be required. This is not an option, once that happens. But also.
What determines whether we have to be a part of the MS Four?
Census data. Once the census data comes out, if you're in an urbanized area, you have to apply for the MS Four permit.
But right now, we don't qualify.
Believe, you qualify for a waiver, correct?
Uh, no, the first time they would write outside urbanized, but there's a chance that it's coming.
Very soon.
Yeah, possibly a couple, usually it's August or September.
Yeah.
Is it someplace like Jacobus or Locustville?
Here, here at MS Four.
I don't, yeah, they're close enough to yours, and they're urbanized, even though they're small municipalities.
Right. I've got a couple townships and other small municipalities that fall under MS Four permitting. It really is based off of the US Census data that describes what the urbanized area is.
So could we pass this and then turn out that we don't really need it?
So that's the other thing. Your existing stormwater ordinance is missing some key pieces there. It calls out a couple maps that describe where you're required to do certain things for rate reductions, volume reductions. You don't have those, they've disappeared, they're not anywhere within the borough that they've been able to find, so it's an incomplete document, and it's almost unenforceable at this point.
Amendable?
Not to current, not to current standards.
Not to current standards.
I mean, you're talking about 92, 93, I think?
Yes.
Was the original one, and, I mean, we've, we've pulled ordinance books, we've pulled minute books, we can find where the adoption occurred, we can find the actual ordinance in the minutes, but all the appendices are not included with that.
Original.
In the minute book. So wherever they existed at one point, I don't know, but they are important, but we're having projects throughout the borough where we can't provide the information that's necessary, like Mike said, enforce the ordinance.
So one of the, one of the key pieces of any stormwater ordinance is, is what's in Appendix B, and that's your runoff coefficients and curve numbers, that, that describes how the engineer is required to. Where the heck are you? Appendix B, it's, it's really close to the end there. But it, it tells the engineer how to calculate the runoff, so it gives values to open space, parking areas, and if you don't have this information, it's really up to the engineer's discretion, they could essentially not do anything but manipulate the numbers. The other reason that you have to do this is because Pennsylvania Act 167, you're not compliant with that currently, and that's regulating stormwater. So you're currently in non-compliance. Now, that said, they don't go out and find, at least they have not, but they could.
More pressure from EPA, the more chance DEP's gonna come knocking on your door.
Correct.
What was your additional comment?
He got it.
That was it?
Yeah, I mean, it's to get ahead of what's coming down the tracks, and to fix what's currently in place, which is incomplete, to say the least.
So there's nothing in our current ordinance that's like, this Appendix B that we're gonna have?
No.
So then that's making it all, so actually, if it's not enforceable, you can't really go.
And this isn't really, this isn't overkill?
This is the minimum that you can.
Don't wanna see the big one.
No, this just, this just puts us into current compliance. Correct.
We probably won't get worse than what this is, because we don't have enough developed land that we can develop anymore, so we're probably, this is gonna be, I think, sufficient for us going forward, right?
In the last year, I've had two requests for stormwater ordinance and clarifications of what's existing, and I've had to, I've actually taken this Appendix B and just handed it to them and said, this is what we're looking to potentially pass, this is what I would recommend using, but I can't force them to use it.
That's your question. It's a lot to.
Yeah, it is a lot. It gives us a lot of tools, too, to make sure that development is done properly, and make sure that everything is taken care of, so I think it's a good thing.
So if somebody wants to put in a driveway, they would have to be compliant with portions of this? If the runoff goes down into the street, and, I mean, we've basically got what, two, two farm areas that could be developed if ever, in the borough, that's it, right?
Dryer farm, and then to one out, more constitution.
When you talk about driveways, if you're talking about repaving a driveway, that would all under an exemption. It could be a thousand square foot, but as long as it's in the same footprint and it's a residential property, they can replace impervious. It's when you start adding impervious for residential properties that it's an issue.
So they wanna add park, get parking pads or something like that?
Right.
Would break that, like, sense.
So let's take the case where we've got a driveway, it's maybe 240 square feet, and it's existing driveway, you wanna repaint that, and I have to put a parking space, parking pit adjacent to it, so now it's changed, right? It's no longer, you're, or, you're only regulating. only regulating the new impervious area in that case. When you're talking about residential, it's much more lenient in that it's only new impervious. So replacement impervious with a residential is exactly, it's new impervious that you come into play here. Now with commercial, it's a little different in that it's new existing oral replacement that is regulated. Is, is, you should ask the question because I already know the answer. But if it's, if it's commercial and it's new impervious, you get, you know, you've got a lot of new impervious. I mean, you do one and then next year you do another one. That's when it comes in, you keep the track, right? Because otherwise you treat it as separate. And none of them can meet the requirement or be required to provide some type of control on their own. If you have them all together, you start adding them up, well, then that changes.
Yeah, so there's actually a section here that talks about these projects and it is cumulative. So that a developer can't say, oh, I'm gonna build twenty-five hundred here to a minor permit and twenty-five hundred here to a minor permit. It's, once you exceed that threshold, then it's a little more complex.
Then it's coming down the borough to keep track, to know about the property and add these together and correct everything.
What about power washing? Do we have proper drainage for that? In the, you know, my driveway's slopes and I have power washing down.
As long as it's just water, then that's not an issue.
For the power washers, they use chemicals.
If there's chemicals-
See, that's the problem. And the power washer has been around and shoes for years and years. And I'm sure he's not aware of it, you know. I'm gonna tell him now that the job is already done. But I'm saying, if everybody, if somebody has a window washer or something like that, my-
Well, as long as it doesn't, as long as it goes into the ground, you're all right.
But it doesn't, see, the way it slopes, the water goes down and there's no drain or anything. So then it collects in the road coming around, you know, to my property. In the winter times, I've had, there's quite a bit of water sits and, you know.
So there's not a storm drain there, correct?
Yeah. I'm wondering about the whole drainage system.
Well, there is a storm drain along your, right?
On my, where I am? Where is that, you know? I haven't seen, because I've been looking.
I think-
Because I know when people, I was supposed to have a window washer and I canceled it because, you know, you're aware of the environment now, all of us are. But I couldn't, couldn't find anything. And see, then I have a, like I have a swimming pool when I'm backwashing, just the backwashing for a little bit floods that, you're laughing, floods that whole side. Then that's all, you know?
That would be an illicit discharge.
So we're getting into really advanced things.
Yeah.
But if she discharges onto her, onto her grass, that's okay.
As long as it doesn't go into the storm sewer.
As long as it doesn't go into the storm sewer. So you may have to backwash twice
Oh, back, okay, all right.
Or something, you know, if it's actually making it to the road. But as long as you spread it out over your lawn, it's okay.
The issue only applies once it gets into the storm drain. If you prove, if you keep it from going into the storm drain, it's not an illicit discharge.
I have a question about our neighborhood, Color Point. Some neighbors have drains in their front yards that's surrounded entirely by grass. How, how would that affect?
Are those drains part of the public sewer or storm sewer?
Yeah. Nobody's ever been able to-
Weird setup, yeah.
So it doesn't go into an infiltration drainage?
Is that an exception because of the sump pumps?
It's just a storm drain. The same storm drain, you can find one four feet away in the street. It's the same thing in the front yard, entirely surrounded by grass. My neighbor right next door-
Is that because of all the springs that they've got on properties or?
I wouldn't see how it could be.
Because you've got people there with sump pumps, two sump pumps running twenty-four hours a day, pumping out in their yard. And if it doesn't go into something like that, it's, it's just gonna go continue down in the neighbor's basement and that neighbor's basement.
Yeah, that goes back to the one word feasible. And I would argue in that case, a sump pump in that area, if you've got a high water table, there's no reason you couldn't discharge it into the sanitary or the stormwater system because it's not feasible anywhere else.
Yeah, I discharged a new one. It's in my backyard. That overflows into the side yard and goes out over the sidewalk, street. But there's, there's at least three houses in our neighborhood that have these drains in their front yard.
Yeah, as long as they're not discharging chemicals and other prohibited discharges in there, they don't need to relocate those.
Okay.
Am I correct in my assumption that previously though, they weren't allowed to put those sump pumps into the stormwater drain? That some of them got like an exception? I won't mention any names, but I thought there were neighbors that got together and they dug and put them in and they were allowed to go in the stormwater drain because they just couldn't get rid of it. It was-
I think there is a few of them.
So they're allowed to do that under this?
It's not ideal.
No, but it's, that's the only feasible way to get rid of the-
If that's the only feasible way, then there are, that is in which they can do that.
It's clean water.
Yeah, it's rainwater. It's stream waters, rainwater, there's an act for underneath all these houses.
So I think as long as you're looking at clean water, you're okay.
Okay, that's good. That's good for your folks to know then.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. And the first is Joseph Lertz from Seventeen Country Manor Lake. And the next up would be Jim Mustard from Rose Fire Company. And this is a little bit unusual, public comment, because Kim and Jim and I met and we put together a presentation. Did you want to talk to her? Do you want me to talk?
You can, either, whatever you like. I apologize to the radio, I wanted to do-
With what?
On call. I'm a radio, unfortunately.
Everybody should have a New Freedom Borough patent in front of them. So this is, we're getting ready to go into budgets and in years, in years past or recently, since we've been on council, we haven't had a lot of input from fire and EMS. And this, this was an attempt, Kim and I reached out to Jim and we had a couple of meetings and we put together a request for New Freedom Borough. And so I just wanted to walk through this. You can stop me if you have any questions at any time. But basically EMS Act eighty-two requires all municipalities to provide- Requires all municipalities to provide fire and EMS services. And on the other side of the, of the scale, the borough also has to require that the organizations providing these services give us an itemized way of how they're spending the money that the borough is giving them. So this is what kind of creates this relationship for us. So what does New Freedom Borough receive from Rose? Well, the average salary of paid fire employee is about eighty-five thousand dollars. And they've been getting about ten volunteers per call. So that's about eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars a year of services that New Freedom gets. The average cost of a small paid fire department is two and a half million dollars. So you can see, if you look at all of those numbers, you know, we're getting a, we're getting a lot of benefit. All of the documents that support fire recommend four persons per shift per truck. And the personnel costs, according to the Municipal Technical Advisory Service, mean, personnel costs represents about eighty-five percent of a paid fire company. So what this means to all of the people in New Freedom is Rose is saving taxpayers about a thousand dollars in tax money every year by being volunteers. So I looked at, what does it mean to be a volunteer? And it was kind of interesting because Rose and Glen Rock and Shrewsbury Borough put together a fire camp. And my grandson went to the fire camp and I went one day. And I, I learned probably more at the fire camp than I've known for a while. So it was really, really very interesting. And they had thirty-four kids show up and they're hoping to get about six volunteers out of that. Because volunteers, as we all know, in sporting events, in recreation, whatever, volunteerism is, is very much declining everywhere. So I like sixty-one's motto. Sixty-one at Shrewsbury Borough, and they say that they're professionally staffed by volunteers. And that's true, because all these guys and girls are going out and they're getting training, they're keeping their training up to date. They're on call twenty-four seven, they're saving property and lives. They provide their own supervision. They provide their own purchasing because they go to different vendors and figure out what they need for equipment. They are responsible for the cleaning and the maintenance of the equipment in the house. And they actually also provide medical assistance for class one, two, and three for New Freedom Borough med calls. So that's, that's another thing. In fact, when we met with Jim, that, earlier that day, five-thirty in the morning, I think you said you were out on, on call as, as an E M T because he kind of does it always.
That's what I'm doing right now.
Jack watch raid.
Our, our A L S unit is out, so I'm the next A L S provider that's in town. So if there is a cardiac arrest, I would be the provider that would be doing the work.
Right.
So.
And that's, you know, and not, not to pick on Jim, but I mean, Jim is a volunteer fireman, he's a volunteer E M T, he's a volunteer president of Rose Fire and EMS. He takes care of six kids?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
And, and wife. And, you know, this is, this is his life. I mean, this is what he does for New Freedom Borough. So kind of what they're doing is coming to us and saying, we need your support. So what does Rose Fire need? Okay, well, all of the fire tax that we give them goes just to keep the lights on. And they're, they're also looking at some other expenses coming up, like the roof needs repaired and there's some asbestos issues, I believe you said. And so that, all that money goes just to keep, keep everything working. So Rose is replacing an engine with a purchase demo, and that's at no cost to New Freedom Borough. This is money that they're finding on their own, they're getting some grant money and they're, and they're buying that engine. But they do have a requirement to replace the ladder truck, and that's one point eight million. It's used approximately fifty-fifty by New Freedom Borough and other municipalities. So you figure fifty percent of that truck is kind of gonna be ours. And that's nine hundred K spread over a twenty-year low interest loan, or about forty-five K per year. So remember, we talked about a thousand dollars per household that they save? Well, this is twenty-four dollars per household that we need to give them back so that they can, they can do, do what they need to do. So there's gonna, of course, there's gonna be other requirements in the future. I'm not gonna try to say that, you know, if we give them forty-five K a year for twenty years, they're not gonna need anything more because that's not, that's not gonna be true. But one option would be for New Freedom Borough to provide a memo of understanding to fund the forty-five, forty-five K per year until it's paid off. And that'll do a couple of things for them. They can take that memo of understanding and they could go and get funding and it'll show that, that we're supporting them. They're also going to Shrewsbury Township to ask for forty-five K a year. So that'll be, you know, make it easy or relatively easy to get a loan. So that's, that's what Rose Fire Company is asking of us. They're asking for the current fire tax that they already received plus forty-five K a year. And I'm suggesting it be in the form of a memo of understanding to avoid one enacting another tax because this could go away, at least for a few years, probably the other equipment requirements. But it would go away after the fire truck or the ladder truck were paid off. Plus, it kind of spreads the cost. If you take it out of the general fund, it doesn't just hit the property owners, it also hits the people who are renting because earned income tax goes into the general fund too. So that's the total request for Rose Fire. And what does Rose EMS needs? Well, Rose EMS is not entirely volunteer. They, they do billing and they, they do receive funds that way. But as we found out from the EMS meetings, which Kim has been going to, I've been going to some of them, and Chemo's been going to some, they're not entirely self-sustaining. They're hampered by billing laws and maximum allowable billing. And those laws are being looked at right now by Christian Phillips Hill and by Julie Wheeler to try to get them changed. Because right now, the way the laws are written, if I own the insurance policy, the reimbursement for my ambulance call of eight hundred dollars comes to me. And me being the way I am, I would go to the casino and not reimburse Rose for that. So that's what's happening. And we need to make sure that that doesn't happen. So Julie Wheeler and Christian Phillips Hill are working on that. And the EMS is working hard to become more and more self-sustaining. So what do they need?
Well, we get into discussing, yes.
And that'll be?
We, in order to keep things moving, I think we need to have that.
Now, I mean, not making a gun?
Yes. But I'm gonna, Shrewsbury Borough, oh, anybody there?
Yes.
Well, they, they, yes.
You have the note there about the pension plan audit. The audit was complete for the years of twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. There was a finding from twenty nineteen, just an error on a calculation that was done, which actually increased by one unit, which is one person. So that money, that's shown in that report, but it just needs to be paid back. And we're actually gonna handle that this week. You have the note about the twenty twenty-three budget. We're already working on getting things preliminary put together. We'll use the budget or the actual numbers as of the end of August to project through the end of the year. So we'll be on track for budget meetings coming up here in the next couple of months. Refuge contract, we had a meeting with Penn Waste and Republic to discuss alternates to the current contract. As you can imagine, the price of refuse and recycling collection across the board has drastically increased. Some of these palaces are facing in the neighborhood of a hundred to two hundred percent increases on the high side. We'll, we'll do everything to try to avoid that. But I just want to make council aware that you're gonna be coming into decisions about the refuge contract for twenty twenty-three and future years. That's probably gonna require quite a few changes in the frequency of collection, amount of collection, method of collection. We're going to roll as many options into that contract to have both potential bidders because there are only two. Provide an array of, of options.
Is the hope, hope of land development that they're talking about reopening, is that being reopened for Penn Waste or for Republic?
Well, that'd be Republic at the lead of this new land. But that's as a result of the halt of negotiations between Republic Services and Lower Windsor Township about expanding the current landfill into another area. Lower Windsor Township has basically told Republic that they are no longer going to discuss that. It's not an alternative. So what you have to realize is that directly impacts all refuge collection in York County because even the ash from incinerator, where all municipal trash goes, in York County goes to landfill. So it directly impacts all York County residents by not allowing Republic to expand that landfill. And I understand the concern, nobody wants it in their backyard, but it unfortunately has to go somewhere. And if that landfill or another landfill cannot be expanded, you can expect another large increase in refuge cost because now you're talking about hauling it to another county, to another landfill. So- So not only are you talking about waste that can't go to the incinerator, but you're talking about all municipal waste in York County and ash going somewhere else. Which, again, you can expect another large increase. So there's a lot of uncertainty in that market now. Just trying to prepare everyone for that.
Well, this actually, just for my own, this, this won't really reflect in taxes at all. It's just gonna reflect, reflect in the refuse.
Correct.
So it is what it is. I mean, there's not a whole lot we can do about it.
Yeah. We've spoken in the past, obviously, a lot about slider tank replacement. We are going to be working with Aero Consulting, who's actually doing some work on the water system right now, about the feasibility of replacing that tank or eliminating it in its entirety. We just want to evaluate to make sure that if we would eliminate that, that there's no low-flow situation. And right now, we don't believe that there would be, with the storage capacity available in the Coler Point tank, as well as the capacity of the wells. And even eliminating, potentially in the future, the York Water Collection or Connection and keeping that on emergency basis. So nothing important right now. We're taking a step back to evaluating the need. And if it's that we can eliminate it and tear it down and remove it, obviously, that's a large chunk of money that we don't need to spend on the water system at this time.
What, was that already torn down?
No.
A lot of states, it was torn down?
It's there. Still there.
How would, how would not having that affect pressure in, of homes in that area? I thought they were having a problem.
It's too, it's too low already.
Yeah.
I mean, the tank, right, compared to the, that Coler Point tank.
Right, the Coler Point tanks, that tank's not doing anything for pressure in that area, it's all coming from.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if that would feed a certain area that has lower pressure, because.
No, that's, that's part of this whole study, to make sure that eliminating that pressure in that area, that Coler Point will still be able to provide that, plus.
Are you getting complaints now from the slider area?
No.
They're, they have to, they have to pump water out of that tank to get the turnover, because the water's not gonna draft naturally, because the tank's too low. So they actually pump it out, keep it, and it's, it's a, it's a, you know what to operate. And it creates water quality issues.
Large problems.
And where are, where are we with, with pricing? Because it keeps going up and up and up for that tank, for the replacement? What are we, what is it, four million?
No, the last was three.
Very. So that would save us three million dollars.
It would be the cost of removal of the tank and, yeah.
It'd be really nice not to have it.
Preliminary.
But DEP hasn't, as they have, they wait, they haven't weighed in yet, as to whether or not we need it.
Correct.
Oh, did we, they tell us whether we need it or not?
Well, they, they.
They control the type of chemical pump that we use for the water system, so.
How large is the Coler Point tank?
Seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Thousand. How old is that tank?
It's a hundred.
It's a hundred.
A dozen years. I was gonna say, probably about a dozen, because it was, but it just required, and then it's been there about, about ten.
What's it lined with?
It's not, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's a glass-paneled tank. The steel panels are glass-lined inside and outside, so the tank itself doesn't have any line, per se. It's individual panels that are, when they're, when they're, it's, it's sort of like ceramic, you know? They take the steel panels and they coat them with the stuff, they fire it, got a glass coating on it, after the holes are all punched for the, for the bolts, and they just, they just put the tank together.
To eliminate the problem we have with this current tank, where it's a matter of we either take care of resurfacing the inside for water or.
It's, it's a corrosion.
So it's not like that one could go down for a couple of months and then we're in a pickle, because our wells can't keep up with it or anything.
Well, we're shutting wells off now.
Okay.
Because we don't need them to be running, and we have enough storage with the Coler Point.
That tank was down for a while already, but after we first put up those, the roof storm took part of the roof off.
True.
So to, whatever, it replaced.
Part of Coler Point.
We love it.
What about the York Water? Any update on that? You've reached out multiple times?
I've reached out multiple times, and I'm not getting a call back. So I do have that later on the agenda. I will, if we would like to have a solicitor reach out, again, I, there's no, they don't have to talk to us, that's the, we're just asking for, to open up discussion.
Stop sending them the check.
Yeah.
Turn it off and don't send the check. I'll bet you'll get a call.
Yeah. I, I mean, again, right.
Write a letter from the solicitor first.
Yeah.
And get that from there. Next thing, again, Regional Comprehensive Plan approved the intermunicipal agreement earlier this evening, so thank you. We had a kickoff meeting July fourteenth. We have a meeting once a month moving forward. The entire comprehensive plan is anticipated to take about eighteen months. And I was voluntold to create a website for the Regional Planning Commission and publication of the comprehensive plan, and I think it's similar to what Dover Borough and Dover Township went through in the last couple of years. And it was a great opportunity for the residents to be informed on that process. So we'll be implementing that as well.
So that means that in eighteen months, we then have a press director?
No, this is just, this is a comp plan. So this is more of your land use and availability of amenities? And of what you need to provide residents, where, where there's lacking.
So in, in that process, there's gonna be public hearings regularly?
What's that?
There'll be public hearings going forward in the process.
Yeah, there'll be opportunity, a lot of opportunity for public input, as we go through surveys and all of those. Yeah.
Residents' report, the state, Pennsylvania State has recently approved a one-hundred percent property tax credit for borough property tax liability for volunteer fire and volunteer EMS. And what that means is we can go back and update ours to reflect that. Now, with that being said, Shrewsbury Township and Shrewsbury Borough have already done that.
And this would only be a change on the real property tax credit?
Correct. It's one-ninety-nine dash seventy-seven under real property tax credit A. So we would have to change the twenty percent to a hundred percent. And I think we would strike, however, in no case show the real property tax credit exceed five-hundred dollars. And also, at the very bottom, maximum combined earned income tax credit and real estate tax credit probably should just be struck.
So they would be, they would be eligible for a hundred percent of real property and how much earned income unlimited?
No, I don't think they did that. I think it was just the real property tax.
Well, hold on. But, yeah, I'm just curious about if you strike that.
Yeah, if you strike that, yeah. Well, what we were trying to do with that was that there are volunteer firefighters that don't own real property, or, or house.
So, so right now, they can get up to five-hundred dollars earned income, up to twenty percent of tax liability, but two of those can't exceed five-hundred dollars.
Right.
So if you make the real property a hundred percent, you still need to set a threshold for accumulative, I think.
What did Shrewsbury do? Do we have a copy of Shrewsbury's?
I do.
They print that?
They did property tax credit a hundred percent, correct?
Yeah. And that's what the law allows.
But that's a state.
But then.
It used to be twenty.
What did they do with income credit?
Well, well, here's from, do, do we know, like, has there been, like, a real benefit to any municipalities? Like, he already said, like, they're still seemingly in trouble, and this has been up for about a year, like.
I think this is difficult, because we did have somebody, most of the times, the last two years, I should say, what I've done is, the majority of the individuals are doing the earned income tax credit. So we provide paperwork, what they get on the backend, we'll, we'll see that's processed through York Adams Times Bureau.
I think it's like, as far as number of volunteers, I guess, bring them in.
Well, but I, what I was gonna get at is, the real property tax credit, twenty percent, I think we did one, and they got twenty-seven dollars.
That was, yeah, they, that's, that was the big gripe about that, no matter what, you're not gonna get that much.
Well, right, because your, well, your millage here is one-point-eight-five million, which is excellent rate for the service that's provided. So you're not gonna, you know, twenty percent is always gonna be.
There's a lot of, not a lot of money there.
Yeah, they, they didn't, they didn't limit it at all. So they actually struck what we have here, and they would be eligible for both.
So then.
They don't, they're silent on.
What would you do in, in one-ninety-nine seventy-six A? Leave it to five-hundred dollars for earned income and then a hundred percent of real property?
I thought it was a hundred percent of.
The first one? No, it was, it was a hundred percent of real property.
Yeah. Does somebody now top their head, what is, what is the earned income tax average for?
Well, it's one percent.
It's a one percent, oh, yeah, that's true.
And that's what they did with unlimited, correct? Tax credit.
Yeah, I don't see where they.
Hundred percent of earned income tax, not correct?
So, earned tax, if you wanna do that. Is that what they did? No, it, it was real property.
That's what the act of.
A thousand.
What's that?
A thousand.
You just up what?
Up, up to at least a hundred.
Yeah.
With your own property and your work.
Well, before, it was either or.
So I thought it had to be.
And we.
I know.
It can be, but I think when we did ours, we made a mistake and didn't do either or, we did both.
Correct.
The fire chief in Shrewsbury put out that they passed that, and they, a hundred percent, he said he was.
And Jim was.
Working for flights and people inquiring to come to Shrewsbury to be a volunteer.
And it, and it's one-hundred percent for the property tax. What did they do with earned income?
Just give it to them.
Okay.
They put it in time.
All right.
And they have a desire to help us all, so.
It's five-hundred dollars for earned income.
That's the max.
Yeah.
Well, where did the hundred percent come in?
For real property.
Out of both years, we only had one person do real property, but I think that was because it was twenty percent.
Okay, so for section one-ninety-nine dash seventy-nine, in the event any person qualifies for both the earned income tax credit and the real estate tax credit, said person, person shall only be entitled to receive an earned income tax credit up to five-hundred dollars. So that can basically keeps the earned income tax at five-hundred, and it allows them to get a hundred percent of their property tax.
Both.
That can get both, yeah. But only five-hundred of the earned income tax, which it matches what, what the other, other municipalities did.
And they're also going to school.
Yeah, they're going to the school board, too.
To try to get something.
Well, that's, I think that's covered in one-ninety-nine seventy-six. A, sorry. So that, that's where it says up to five-hundred. So you get up to five-hundred earned income, you get a hundred percent real property.
Okay.
So your, your maximum combined benefit, you can keep, you just, if, you can keep all that wording the same, you just need to decide, well, the overall dollar now, if the suggestion wants to go to, just change that five-hundred to a thousand, if you'd like.
No, I think what I wanna do, I mean, it's up to, obviously, it's up to council, but what I'd, what I'd like to do is, yeah, get rid of it. I mean, if, if I'm a, let's say Jim Mustard. Jim Mustard would be eligible to get a hundred percent of his property tax as a rebate and up to five-hundred dollars of his earned income tax, which is probably what? TK? Twenty less?
I mean, it depends on.
Right, obviously. Doesn't make sense?
Do we act on something on this?
I'm sorry?
Do we act on something?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have to, we would have to.
Amend it.
Yeah, and we'd have to be advertising them. So I guess what I'm asking for is a, a motion to change one-ninety-nine dash seventy-seven A and change it to, to twenty percent to a hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
And strike the line that says, however, in no case show real property tax credit exceed five-hundred dollars. That's the change on that page. And strike one-ninety-nine dash seventy-nine, because it already says five-hundred on the one and a hundred percent on the other. So you really don't need the maximum combined paragraph.
Just combined.
And they can get both.
Just till we.
I have, I have a first.
Oh, second.
I have a second. So the other discussion?
This is just authorizing the advertisement.
Yeah, just authorizing. Well, I mean, somebody has to make those changes, but then, and then advertise those changes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos? My vote is aye. We already covered the Rose Fire Company budget requests. We already covered the Rose Fire Company budget requests.
Mayor's report.
Okay, Southern Regional Police Department, you have your, all your reports, I don't need to go into those. Chief was apparently not able to make the last commission meeting. He had been exposed to someone who had COVID and had to quarantine. So Officer Hefner came in, but of course, he didn't have the same information. Nothing real drastic going on, you can see we're running a little bit over for our municipal totals for the year, but, you know, that could even itself out. We've, we had a couple of things that did take some time, and I think it'll, you know, knowing Chief, he'll, he'll try to even those out a little bit. Financial report, self-explanatory, they got enough donations to cover everything for the K9 vehicle. That is paid in full, on the financial statement, you'll see it's a little short. They borrowed from the general fund, but that'll get paid back. Is there anything else we wasted, I understand?
They sold a car for $5,000 on municipal, the K9 vehicle that was replaced will be sold for approximately $8,000. They are still seeking a new hire for officer, the Stewartstown toilet overflow, the deductible that we were gonna send them was $5,000, that has been changed to $2,500 because they found pipes that also went to that toilet elsewhere, so they cut that in half. And it was also reported by Officer Hefner that the roof was leaking and that a roofer said that that roof needs to be replaced.
And we're going down on quote, to get the roofer, right?
Does, is that gonna need a complete roof here?
The original, the assessment, that initial assessment that we received is, the roof has met its useful life.
Okay, because this was two separate buildings, and I didn't know if they had done...
No, it's all one, all one roof, all at the same time.
Okay, so they must have put, already put into roof one.
When the building was built.
No, it was two, this building was built after that building. That used to be where the police are, that was the original building, this was all built later.
This is all, this used to be a soccer field. This used to be a soccer field.
But that was built at one time, this was built at another.
I, I know, but now, you're, you're wrong. It was all one building built at one time.
That I see now?
I, I don't remember. The carport was added on.
What?
The carport was added on.
No, it wasn't the carport, that was...
This is all one building.
That was, this is before we had Southern Regional Police Department, okay? They were, we had two police officers, and they were in a room in the back, and the rest of the offices were over there.
The police officers were in the Public Works building.
Were in Public Works, and your offices were over there, and then I was told this building was built later, added on.
No.
That's why you have vestibule out front, because this was put on later.
No.
Well, whatever we need, whatever we need to do.
I mean, having up in the attic, it's all one building.
When was the brown notified that our roof has met its useful life?
Couple weeks ago, we had a tractor out.
Has that leak over there been taken care of, you know?
We had the roofer out, he made some interim repairs to it. It's not, that, it's not so much the roof, we had, next week, we had a condensate pan overflow.
I knew it.
And, and again, we've, we're making sure that they're cleaning them and they're moving the traps.
Yep, and blowing them out.
And we're blowing them out, but it still happens unfortunately. And why you put air handlers in an attic, I don't know, but that's another topic.
My father-in-law lost his entire gun collection because he had a closet and his air handler was right above that.
That's exactly what happened at Hartens Farms, it came down, we were really all our offices...
Hollow rust. I have a quick question.
Yes.
This kind of, since Bruce is here, might actually, but I, everyone keeps arguing about the rate that Glen Rock should pay in the negotiate, you know, like, what's the hourly rate? And you and I talked about it, and I don't understand why we can't just take what their budget is now, divide by the 7.69 PPU's and come out to $84, whatever the number is. Is there a reason I can't do it?
Well, because that would be the same as what they were paying as a municipal...
Okay, well, then you have to decide, but I'm just saying.
So we've gotta make sure that they're paying more than what...
That aside, though, but that gives us the baseline number, right? If we wanna know what we're paying per hour for police, you take your PPU's, multiply times 5, 20 to get into the hours, and divide that number...
How much we paid last year and...
Right, yeah.
That gives you how much our hourly is.
Yeah, it's gonna get you close, right? No.
Well, because we don't include administrative in that, do we?
Absolutely, see, that's the issue, they're gonna pay for the actual time they're getting police service, not the admin time. The admin time is included in your PPU's.
Right. Oh, I see, so you're saying that the PPU's, no, that doesn't make...
The PCU is, one PPU is 520 hours.
Right.
But that 520 hours isn't the time the officer actually spends policing, it's just 520 hours that he gets paid for, which could include vacation time, training time, whatever else, as well as time actually giving you police services.
Okay, but if I'm a contract person, you know, like Glen Rock, why wouldn't, they would pay for all of that as well, right?
That's not the way they're doing it.
They never did it that way before, like with...
When it goes up to railroad, which is your only real contract community now, they're getting billed by the hour and, and I don't know what it is, but I can tell you it's, and not anywhere close to what the real costs ought to be. And that's what they did with all the previous contract communities, was charged by the hour, but it's the actual hours that the police were giving of police service, not including the overhead. And that's what started the whole railroad...
So you lose, you lose money, that's a losing, losing proposition, right?
Right, if, you would, you two would probably recall, hadn't somebody come up with a figure of around $106 an hour?
I remember that number.
So what happened six years ago was that Formula Funding Committee, before that committee got started, I used to look at the reports that the chief would issue, similar to what he's issuing today, which told how many hours were actually being given to the community. The numbers that you would come up with, if you took the yearly cost for all the police, divided that, you know, with the hours that they actually were doing police services, those numbers would vary somewhere around $130 to $140 an hour. And the reason they vary was because, if you look at one year and you look at the actual hours that the police give police services, that might vary because who might get extra training one year, who might cross over seniority and get extra vacation time. So those numbers had some variation to them, and so that's what caused the variability in terms like $130, $140 an hour. Now, in 2016, when the Formula Funding Committee met, everybody looked at it, and what we realized immediately, even before the committee met, the month before, was that what they had been doing to calculate an hourly rate was to assume that each officer was actually performing police services for something like 1,950 hours out of a 2,080-hour year. That number was wholly inaccurate. Even the, you know, the state, when they give you that little manual they got on how to set up your police department, was recommending something, I think the number was 1,725, okay? So automatically, you knew that if you're taking that number, you're assuming that you're getting 1,950 actual hours from an officer, you were underestimating what the actual hourly cost was, even by the state guidance. And what the Formula Funding Committee found out, and this was known if anybody was actually paying attention to the numbers that the chief was putting out, was that you were only getting about 1,300 hours from each police officer, which is why when Buck Buchanan started off and we were paying, charging like 60 bucks an hour, and everybody said, oh, no, that's not even coming close to what it actually cost. And Buck would say, all right, well, we'll increase it, we'll put a 10% surcharge on it, and it wasn't coming close. And then they put a 20% surcharge on it, it wasn't coming close. The reason it was coming close is because you're underestimating the hourly cost by 40%, and that's what the Formula Funding Committee found out, and the number that we finally agreed to at that time, based on which hours were you gonna count, which year you were looking at, back in 2016, was about $109 an hour.
Okay, that was close.
And that $109 an hour then would have increased each year, you know, with, you know, increasing costs of the police department. And there was a decision made as far as the contract communities go, rather than give them a big sticker shop, which was gonna take some from like, whatever they were paying, I don't know, 60, 70 bucks an hour, all the way to $108, $109 an hour, plus add-ons, was a three-year phase-in period where they would get a 10% increase of the difference there, and another 10%, and by the end of the third year, they would get there. So the, I hope I've answered your question, it's not a simple case of taking the PPU's that you get and dividing it.
I realize it's not simple, but it seems to me like if, if the, if Glen Rock and the school district aren't paying for admin, it's still in the budget, so it has to be in our budget numbers.
Right, you get, you get hit with...
It is, we get hit with the admin.
Right, so if we get hit with the admin, that means that if we take what we pay...
What you write the check for.
For the year, and we divide by our PPU's, that should be a true indication of the cost, because that budget includes everything, it includes the admin, the cars, the gas, the whatever.
Right.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, Eddie. What are you trying to figure out?
I'm just trying to come close to what, what the hourly rate should be, and I realize it's a monumental task, but...
Well, if you, if you wanna get some idea of what the hourly rate should be, I would separate out the school systems, because I'm not convinced that the school systems are being charged appropriately, if you look at the chief's report there. So if you look at just the number of PPU's that are being given to the membered communities, and multiply, and I think that's, what, 12 officers, is that right, Ken?
Well, we're at 14 now.
Well, not counting the, the school. I think they say two go to the one in school.
Twelve, yep.
So you're down to 12, so if you take 12, multiply that by roughly 1,300, 1,400, that would be the number of hours that I would use to divide to determine the hourly rate for the entire police department. Did, am I making sense with what I just said?
Yeah.
Because that's actual hours that you're using to produce policing, not that the other stuff isn't important or doesn't have to be done, but it's not the service that's being delivered to you. It's like, you know, the plumber comes to your house, you know, he's there for two hours or whatever, or like, this week, I'm gonna have the air conditioner guy come to my house, find a break for air conditioner. But in any event, the, the point is, he doesn't, you know, he charges you for the time he's there, but wrapped up into that cost is all the training that the guys have to get, certification, time off, whatever, whatever it is. So that's why I say if you use about 1,300, 1,400 hours, 100 hours per officer, that would give you an idea of what the actual productive hours are, which includes both that response time and the patrol time. That's what we found in Formula Committee six-plus years ago, so I would use that as a...
Does that also take in admin time into consideration?
That 1,300 to 1,400 hours per officer excludes, pushes all the admin stuff off to the side. So that was just the time that officers spent either responding directly to calls or on patrol. So all the rest of the time, with, if it was in training, whether he was doing, you know, personnel reports, inventory, ferrying cars over to get them fixed, whatever else they might be doing, that's taken out of that. So that's why I would say use something like 1,300 to 1,400 hours, and I think that'll get you close to what the true hourly rate is.
Well, let's take a look at that, see what that comes out to, and then we can discuss that.
Yeah, we could take it on forward.
But I know, whatever they, whatever their cost is gonna be per hour, has to be more than what a municipal partner is.
But, I mean, if your question really is, what are you gonna charge Glen Rock? I guess I would have to beg the question of, why even letting them out of the intergovernmental agreement? If the whole issue is about what can we get and what can they afford, you have it within your power to ratch down the number of PPU's and thereby keep them in the...
At a lower cost, which...
You're gonna wind up paying the cost anyway.
No matter what you do, it's gonna be a lower cost. They're gonna say, this is how much money we have to spend, this is all we're gonna spend, what can we get for that?
So, so if you tell them, well, what does that translate into PPU's? The other three membered communities are gonna pick up those PPU's one way or the other.
Right.
The advantage to doing that is that you can immediately give them the relief that they're looking for in the next budget go-round, as opposed to, you know, however, they're gonna drag this out with an IGA and develop a new contract, as well as the fact that you, as the other membered communities, really now have a little bit of control over Glen Rock that you're not going to have if they go out as a contract community. Because at any time, you know, you think that they're, you know, maybe not quite playing by the rules, you can always say, you know, you're gonna get stuck with a few more PPU's and a little increased cost. And the other three communities can always enforce that budget, because three of you that vote on the budget and agree to it, the fourth's gotta go along, according to the IGA, so you have a little bit more control.
Yeah, in all honesty, I mean, I was looking at it from a, from Glen Rock's perspective, and like you and I spoke the other night, and Erica, too, you're not gonna really save any money. I mean, I don't see where, I just don't see where, especially long-term, I mean, you know, for one year, yeah, you might save 20K. But for long-term, there's no way that you're going to be out getting a windfall where you can do updates to infrastructure in Glen Rock from what they're gonna save from the police department.
Well, yeah, I...
And you're not gonna get the same, they're not gonna get the same service that they're getting now either.
Well, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna get in terms of the service, but I mean, if you kept them as a member and you just cut back the PPU's, and you could, you know, if I might make this case that, hey...
I think that's a good suggestion, and that's something Erica that you can bring to the table when they're trying to negotiate.
I think that's the only solution that makes any sense.
$20,000, $30,000 a year, I mean, if they gotta worry about that, well, they did last year, and we took it out of...
Well, plus, if you take them out of the, out of the mix of membered municipalities, they don't get their refund on their healthcare.
No, that's, that's gone.
You know, 15, 20, I mean, I just...
20, 25,000?
Yeah, so, anyway, I'm sorry.
I mean, you almost have to take, what, they have to come to us and say, we can afford $325,000, what can we get for that?
Well, they already have, I think they've come to us and said, we can afford 300,000.
And we're willing to sign in for five to seven years, and we'll agree to an increase based on what the, what the percentage of increase is for everybody else. But like you said, they're, they're gonna end up being right where they are now in municipal partner.
Yeah, in a year, two years, it's not gonna, they're not gonna be saving any money in two years.
But Glen Rock's position, as I understand it, is, they go to a contract community, you're gonna let them off the hook for any ongoing cost if they stop... you're going to let them off the hook for any ongoing costs if they stop being the contract community. So any of the budget costs, long-term costs...
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, someone has to hand me a piece of paper with a number on it that says, "This is what you're giving out." And I, no one's done that yet.
You're right, no one's done that yet, but I think the three other communities, Stewartstown, Shrewsbury, and New Freedom, would have a lot more control over this situation if you kept them in as a member and just reduced their PPU's to something they could afford. Any idea being, they're going to sort of look at their financials year to year and say, "How you coming on that infrastructure, buddy, and you got it fixed yet? Now you got it fixed, about time to start ramping those PPU's back up."
Because what's going to happen is that they're going to buy a certain amount of PPU's, and at the end of November, they're done, and they're going to have to say, "State Police, we need you for the month."
Right, except they're not going to call it PPU's, you're going to be selling actual hours.
Or they'll have to buy actual hours.
Right.
Back from us.
I mean, the chief has told you that he could ramp back some of the services there.
Correct.
In the sense of, I don't have to do some follow-up investigations, maybe the other communities will pick up some more detective time, because they're not going to investigate any of some of the activities up there, just show up when there's blood in the street or whatever. But, you know, the point is, the chief has said he thinks he can manage that time, providing reduced services. It remains to be seen whether or not he can, but I'll take him at his word, he should know his job. So if he thinks he can ramp down those services to $300,000, then figure out what those PPU's are and just keep them in as a contract member.
That's ideally, and if you and I want to get together too, you know...
Maybe Erica will...
Our recommendations when you meet with them. Knox boxes, we've heard of Knox boxes, Andrew?
They're installed. A union asked today to get the, get them locked, we're going to leave one open, and now we can finally get the letters out to the businesses.
Oh, okay. The letters are out to the businesses yet?
No, that's the letter I reported on before, we are waiting to them, to get them installed so that the businesses, if they'd like to see them installed, we have one at the center, one at the Public Works Building, and one here right out...
So at what, at what time period do we feel that we're going to make it mandatory that this be done? Well, we're looking, I mean, originally, it was what, 90 days from the ordinance?
It was 180 days.
Was it 180 days? And we're sitting where on that?
Past.
So we're going to have to...
Yeah, but I, we can't enforce that, one of the people, we didn't get...
Well, if they didn't get the letter, yeah. Question, do police have access to those Knox boxes also, or just the...
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Because a lot of times, they, they respond to alarms, and if nobody's there, they're going to break down the door, too. Is this something we should try to include, police? I had a conversation with one of the officers after...
I've never heard of a police department having access to that.
I don't know.
I think, yeah, I think they need, pretty much need warrants unless there's an ongoing...
No, if there's an ongoing, they can, and they think something's going on, they'll, they'll get in, but it's going to be through the front door or window, so... Okay, well, I'll, I'll approach that. Okay, check for rebate for the generators going out, we talked about an alcohol. 204 North Constitution, are they in violation with all those signs that are out there? Because I pulled out there trying to head to Main Street. Main Street? No. I was, I was pulling out to go north on Constitution. That's the new vape store, what they're calling a convenience store, Ucal Lounge, whatever. But I could not see to pull out, and somebody could have come around that corner and knocked me for a loop with all those flags and signs. That, what do we call it, the sight line is like completely blocked. Can we do something about that? I mean, we kind of cut them a break, new business, okay, welcome, you know, let people know your store's here, but isn't that a violation from several different aspects?
They already have an application for the variance.
Yeah, but that's for a sign on the building. What about all the signs sitting out in the sight line?
It's not about the signs on the...
You can't see, they ask them to see if there's a car coming.
I, I think we should wait until after the zoning hearing board.
Wait until somebody has an accident?
No, the zoning hearing board's scheduled for...
15th.
I'm not sure.
No, the planning is the 15th, and then we've got to wait for zoning hearing.
Right.
Which is two weeks later, right? So it won't be for another month.
So I guess are you making a formal complaint?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, to protect somebody that's coming out of there, it just, you cannot see. Even asking to move them back three feet, you know, so that you can see when you're pulling out to turn left out of his driveway, because you have that curve coming out on North Constitution from Franklin. And it, it's, it's pretty bad. So that's, that's the... Doors at the community center, we've gotten some complaints that somebody's been playing pickleball on the weekends, because the doors are not locked. Can I assume now that that's addressed and they already locked?
No one told me anything about that.
No, one, they mentioned at a meeting that it spoke to somebody here at the borough.
Wait, wait, I thought I sent you, I thought I sent you an email about, yeah, I did. I sent you an email.
You might have sent me one, I don't know what was on it.
Oh, I sent you both. I don't know, but anyway, somebody was up there on a Sunday playing pickleball, because Monday they came in and the nets were all put up wrong, and they, they have no idea how somebody even got in, but apparently they, someone from Tasteful Occasions was approached, and they said that they were told that they were not to lock the, lock the doors.
What did they say? They weren't locked?
Yeah, they said they weren't, I know Friday morning it was locked, I stopped on my way to work, just to spot check them.
Friday morning, they shouldn't have been, what time, oh, what time, you leave...
It would have been about...
Yeah, because they played pickleball Friday morning.
There was a break in morning.
This was over the weekend, and they were, they were open.
All right. Now, just look, look into and see...
I'll, I'll, I'll double-check, I thought for sure I put you and Andy on that.
I didn't bother emailing them, it was just going to be...
Yeah, but somebody from Tasteful Occasions was said, "We were told we're not to ever lock those doors."
Well, that, that's just not true.
No, I'm just telling you what, you know...
I mean, we need to know a somewhat, name of a somewhat...
Okay, the other, the other issue I have, I know we're running late, hot water, the cook shacks, that whole deal, we don't have to worry about it, they're pulling out the hot water heaters, it's, they've already disconnected the electric, and the heaters themselves will be out probably by the end of the week. They'll address it next year before the carnival, probably in the spring.
Is that rec?
I was hoping that we could, well, where we're going to run into a problem is, we're in violation of the health code, because we don't have hot water and we're doing food prep.
But they have the concert this weekend and they're cooking.
No.
Why are they being removed?
Because they had to, didn't get a permit.
How long ago were they installed? A week before the carnival?
A week before the carnival, yeah.
I, I spoke with Bob, and, I mean, I told him to apply for the permit and come to council, and we could waive the fees. I mean, I, I don't understand why it has to get to like, you know, not be pulling something that's already installed.
They were going to have to pull them out before winter anyhow, because of freezing.
Ah, okay.
Okay, so they just decided, rather than have to go through all that now, they would wait, do the permit thing next spring, and then everything would be hunky-dory, not thinking that there are other people that are probably going to be using it.
In the meantime, can we ask them to...
They're already pulling.
So how does that work with the rec, with three concerts?
Well, there's a, a chart on food prep, that you, you know, what you're going to have if you don't have, excuse me, if you don't have water at all, then you can only do like prepackaged foods. And if you have water, but not hot water, you can do this food, so...
But they went through their food list last Thursday, and purchasing chicken, hamburgers...
They're going to be grilling.
Gabasas.
I think I would do what organizations have done traditionally throughout history.
Throughout, since, since the 1900s.
I think I would cook the food. I, you know, they've got water, they've got a pot they can boil water if they, if they want to, you know, if they think they need hot water for something, but as long as they're not doing dishes and reusing the dishes, the hand of people, I think they're okay.
They're using paper products.
Right, yeah.
That's why, that's why...
And they don't have hand sanitizer, they need a wash station, so...
That's why the Lions did it.
Hand sanitizer, and then rinse your hands off with cold water, and you're good to go.
The Lions put them in because what they were doing was, they were taking all the utensils nightly home, putting them in their dishwasher, cleaning them and bringing them back. They got tired of doing that, and now, this way, they could have hot water so, rinse it, you know, and they thought they were doing something nice for the community, that'll leave them in, and, you know...
They were doing something nice, but as I discussed with Bob, you still just need to get the permit.
Next year, because I approached them and said, you know, "We've got this taken care of, all you have to do," and it wasn't like a full, you know, blow commercial permit you and I talked about, and Andrew, that it was just a section of it that they had to have.
They've got a JFI breaker.
Commonwealth, Commonwealth come in and do an inspection, and that was it. So I guess the guys were down there, and that's probably how that light got turned off, because they had to turn off the electric to unhook the hot water. Remember, I...
No, that was right after the carnival. Donnie said that happened every year.
Well, it happened twice though.
Oh, okay.
It happened after the carnival, and then it happened again last week. And I called the Lions, and they said that, "No, we unhooked everything from the breaker and everything, we're going to take them out." I said, "Why? You're going to do that?" So anyhow, that's where we are with that. We already said Eureka is now ALS.
Eureka, Maryland Lions?
Maryland Lions.
No, Eureka. Eureka has an ALS during the day, but so does Maryland Lions. That's why I said Eureka, because he didn't bring that up. They have an ALS.
No, they've had that, yeah, they've had that for a while now.
Yeah, but I think they, I think they extended the hours. One of the Anbos is currently out of service. What is it, the turbo blew up, going up 83 to the hospitals, so the one's out, we still have use of the other one, they think they can get it fixed within a week. I'll leave this for another time. I don't think I have anything else. Where do we, where do we stand on declaring a property to be abandoned? What do you need to do to declare a property abandoned? It has no gas, it has no water, it has no electric. Is that considered an abandoned house? Under our code?
I mean, if there's something taxes on it, you don't do whatever you want with it.
You could winterize it, turn off the utilities, you could even cancel your, I don't think, can you cancel your trash?
But if the, if the place looks like crap, and it's not been painted, and it's, I don't, I'll come, you and I'll talk about it down at, you'll look at what the zoning, I think we have an abandoned, when we, when we voted to, doing the ordinance for the, the new IPMC, there's a lot of new stuff in there that says about upkeep of houses, what you have to do, what you should do to keep up a house, and we've got houses in town, a couple of that are about falling down. So I guess I just want to find out what we can do about this, if anything. And I know they're not...
Yeah.
We'll discuss it.
About that list, it's going to be very quick.
I think that that's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions on the engineer's reports?
Both run, we're good.
Favorite zoning codes enforcement?
I just had a question on the subdivision land development, so the BFW asked to get an variance?
I'm going to say no. Our lawyer talked to the zoning lawyer, and do I answer the question?
You were going to start it, Karen.
Yeah, I probably should recuse myself. Anyway, Bobby talked with the lawyer, and the, the way the ordinance is written, it's basically if you clear-cut trees, and we're not clear-cutting trees. So our point to the lawyer was that there's no clear-cutting, so there was no variance required. I got word back from Bobby, but you and I had the discussion today, so I'm not quite sure where we're at, but, yeah, so I don't think we, we do, we're waiting to see, I guess, if your county planning comes back with any comments. As far as, as far as I'm concerned, I told everybody to proceed, so...
All right, thanks.
On the photos of the code enforcement, we seem to always have the same picture of an original violation, and sometimes there's improvement, sometimes there's other things, and then it's closed because items have been removed. I would like to have, if there's an original photo that shows a deplorable situation, that says that there's been reported improvement, you would have to go out and look at it, I'd like an updated photo, and then once it's resolved, because everything's been removed, I'd like to refer to reflect that, as you go through the process.
Yeah, before and after photo?
Yeah, we, the owners made progress and so forth, then if you show 25 boxes out there and there's five left, and I want a picture of the five boxes that are left, because there would be progress, not just continually see that original picture through the whole process.
How many times, I mean, we, we send out a letter, and somebody comes back and they respond to you after they get the letter, I guess they call, and how much actual time when we say additional 30 days to finish, we're really looking at, what, maybe 45 days from the time they got the letter till... We're really looking at what, maybe forty-five days from the time they got the letter till they do something?
Well, it'd be thirty days from the original date.
Is that what is required, thirty day notice?
No, at minimum, at minimum, if we're talking about property maintenance, you need to give twenty days, because they have twenty days to appeal the letter to the Board of Appeals from the date of the letter. So you've gotta at least give twenty days.
And how about, how about grass? Grass is...
Twenty days.
Why did it used to be less? Or did we just give them less for some reason?
You have to give sufficient time for them to appeal.
I think we used to give them three days.
Well, they're not getting the letter in three days, even if it's going to two hundred yards.
Well, I mean, three, three days from the time they get the letter. It's twenty, by twenty, twenty days.
Grass is gonna agree that that's the ordinance.
Screwed up on that one, dude.
Man, I mean, twenty, twenty days for grass is gonna be pretty tall.
Yeah. I drove around, looked like everybody kinda got the whole idea on the basketball. Cause I didn't see one.
Drive by John Randall.
What? There's not, there isn't one there, is there? John Randall? I drove by here and there.
There was a home point two.
Yeah, there was a home point two.
That was back? It's a pretty wide street.
Well, that's the one we gave him his money back, right?
Might be alright.
Okay, recreation?
Okay. Wasn't a whole lot going on. There was a number of donations made for, for the concerts. Crescent Industry fifteen hundred dollars, Even Seven Fifty, Harrow's five hundred, and Keller Brown Insurance five hundred. So I think that's, in this current environment with everything that's going on, I think that's incredible to see that, that amount of giving. Question, would it be appropriate to send them like a thank you note, letter?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Andrew, would you mind sending them a little thank you? It was brought up that the Borough needs the budget items. I did just reiterate that that's mainly intended for larger ticket items, but obviously something came up during the year that we would work with them on getting, getting that money. The public comment, Farmer's Market is struggling. They are looking for some additional vendors, and they're also, I think, gonna do some things to change that, I'll do that with the comments on there, on the sheet. Summer tennis program concluded. She did say that that was a pretty big success this year. Again, pickleball was also appreciative, appreciated us getting that fee, the other two hundred dollars a month of the flat rate. The parade was, was it success? Sorry, it's getting late, I'm out of steam. So everybody was in agreement that that was a big success. Concerts in the park, CNC Brewing, and Falling Branch will be participating in all three events. Do they have all the proper paperwork as far as serving?
I have not received it yet.
Does that have to come from CNC and Falling Branch, or?
They both should be providing their different insurance, as well as a copy of their offsite or, or special department. Are they both Canadian?
Falling Branch is not. So I was...
I don't think I can...
I didn't think so either, but I thought that they have this, I guess, not taken care of, but I thought that was, that conversation was already...
I did inform them what they needed, I sent an email.
Okay, so Marion does know that they need that, okay. Is there a timeline? Obviously before...
As long as it's before.
Okay.
Those special department permits are issued usually in a couple hours from liquor control.
Okay, but then would that be complicated, cause there are Maryland and...
I honestly don't know how that works, but I didn't, I don't, I don't know if a Maryland licensed facility can serve in another state, I don't know.
Yeah. Take that note. I'll just remind her that that information needs to be submitted, means it works what? Less than seven days away?
Correct.
So, okay. Again, as mentioned earlier, they are gonna be doing their own food. So I'll let them know that there won't be any hot water, and they should plan accordingly. Veterans Day, the community center has been reserved for November tenth. And they're going to be in the beginning discussions here probably in the next month or two about donations and volunteers and everything else. They did note that there's still some bike riding and skateboarding occurring in the tennis courts, and that there's going to be damage to the courts. Again, it's unfortunate, but I think it's just going to continue to happen as long as people are doing that.
I got four kids off last week. I live down there.
Was a couple of items. As mentioned before, community center not being locked. It wasn't an impression, I think I'd already talked to somebody at the Borough. That's why I didn't bring it up since the meeting. And that it was also not being, or that it was being used without authorization, probably because it's unlocked, and either somebody's just going in there or doing whatever. But Rick did say that he talked to somebody at the Borough and verified that there was nobody, that it wasn't rented out over the weekend. And I know I brought this one up before, but...
Didn't like the one that was there.
That one was broke.
Yeah, it lasted not even a week.
Go to the senior center, it's there working fine.
The one, the one they didn't like before?
They didn't like it, it worked just fine.
Can I let them pick one up that they do like?
I guess maybe that's what we should do.
Not to exceed what they said.
Yeah, the, the guys took it down, and the seniors were there, and they said, can we take that up to our room? I'm serious.
Oh, jeez.
It works just fine.
Well, they, they didn't mention what they didn't like about it, so that we know...
It was huge.
Was it the fact that it was battery operated, they couldn't, I don't know.
They wanted battery backup.
They wanted a back, yeah. I just... You get something?
We'll take that.
Please, please and thank you. That's all I have. Oh, the lights, I know that we've already spoke about that. Has there been any update on the lights up there? I know you said you guys were looking into it.
Looking at LED fixtures, Donnie was getting prices on them.
Okay, if, when you get an update on it, please, not so please.
Didn't they fix one of them? I saw a cost for a ballast that said community center.
Any LED? What is Alice?
Alice?
Alice.
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 Okay. So anything on business development, other than the hookah lounge?
Grocery store, accommodation, hookah lounge, and betting parlor.
I wanna talk to you about that, remind you that...
Betting parlor?
Oh, it's got slot machines, it's got ten slot machines lined up against the wall.
In there?
Yep.
Or games of skill.
Games of skill.
Do they pay?
They pay out, yeah.
They have them installed.
They got them installed.
Rotters has them out. Yeah.
I know, I know some rotters like up in Loganville, I know they have something, I didn't know about it. It's another, I won't say.
I think, I think we spoke about EMS and firefighting. I did, nothing's been updated since the county, since Tri County joined EMS. I think we still have to fill, we have to fill out another survey, which is gonna be the same answer as this last time.
We don't, we don't, there's no meeting scheduled, is there?
No, okay, same. I'll just look. Infrastructure, we've kinda talked about the roads, any authorized payment for the bills. Anything else on infrastructure? Intergovernmental Committee, I sent out an email. I honestly think that the, well, I think you've all read it, but the Intergovernmental Committee has achieved its purpose. I mean, we, we were starting an Intergovernmental Committee because we knew that our Borough Office wasn't responsive necessarily to the other municipalities. So we formed an Intergovernmental Committee. Kim and Erica have done this successfully. They've both done a great job, and their work has helped pave the way for other cooperative efforts. So I'm considering the needs of the Borough. I think I'd like to dissolve the Intergovernmental Committee and commending Kim and Erica for a job well done on this committee. I'm sure they're probably still going to attend other municipal meetings. However, I'm taking away the obligation that they have to go to these meetings. Eric is on multiple police committee commission. She just volunteered to be on the collective bargaining. And you've got two extra meetings among, with the IGA.
Fire company. I just, I, I would like to say I really think that it's been important that we do show up to their meetings. It shows that we're interested, we've gotten along ways, we've made friends. They constantly tell us how much they appreciate us, showing interest. I, I, I don't...
I don't believe our work is done.
I really don't either, especially when it comes to like Stewartstown. I, I know you made a comment that sometimes they do tell us, you know, we're not residents. And they, they do, but I think they only do that so that they're not setting up a precedent. They make sure that they state that, you know, and we know you're from the IGC, you know, and we're gonna allow you to talk even though you're not a resident. We've never gotten turned down, I don't think, to talk. Sharky even got turned down one time when he was trying to propose the IGA. I mean, you, if council thinks our work is done, so be it. But I, I think we still have a lot to do, and just showing up, I don't have a problem. I'm gonna be there anyway.
I don't have a problem either, and I think that continuing a positive outreach to our sister communities is a benefit to our citizens. And I think that job is...
No one's turned around to reach back out in two years. No one's come here to, to do the same thing. And we've gotten, like I told you in the email, we've gotten some negative feedback from some of the people. You know, I mean, you've reported two, two meetings in a row that, you know, you're not allowed to talk sometimes, or that, you know, they, you know...
They say that, and then they allow us to.
Because I don't think they set a precedent, because...
I still think, I still think that they, that some of the members in other municipalities consider it to be a little bit invasive, so I, I would like to terminate it.
Then you know something we don't know.
That is not the feedback that we have received directly from municipalities and our council members, I can guarantee you that.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna debate it. I mean, I, I really think, and, and again, you can continue to go. You're a mayor, you're a council member, and you're a citizen. You can go to the meetings. I'm just taking away the obligation to go and taking it away as an official duty that you have here. That's all I'm doing. And I think it's, I think it's warranted. You have the whole email that I wrote, so I'm not gonna belabor the points again.
Why would it work for you?
I'm sorry?
I heard him over there mention it works for him.
Works for me.
It was never an obligation to go. I don't feel that there ever was.
Well, you had an obligation when you were appointed to the committee. It is an obligation. But now, I mean, I just, I'm just trying, I'm trying to...
Consistently as we did. I mean, I don't feel like it's an obligation to go consistently as we do.
Right, but you can still go.
So no worries, so who, who is taking that role?
There is no role, we just...
There is no role. The Borough, the Borough, they can communicate with the Borough Office. They can, if they want to, I mean, it's, that role's not on any other council or any other municipality. If we, if we hadn't gotten a little bit of feedback, I mean, you got, and I don't wanna really belabor the point, but there's two municipalities that would rather we not be there, and there's one municipality that is like, eh, well, you know, they're, they're there, but we don't really care. So I really think that you've helped this council transition. I think that you've helped this council in a lot of different ways. I think in part, the, even, even the sewer arrangements, I think, the furthering of the sewer plan is, you know, helped. But they also used you in Shrewsbury Borough, where they were kinda late making comments about new freedom. So I think that it's reached a point where we're, we're good. We can continue with the Borough Office. We will certainly use the mayor's office to go back and forth, and I, I think, I think we're good. I'm just taking away the obligation that you have to go every month.
Your call.
All right, so what changes when I do go?
Nothing, you can just go as a citizen.
I go as a citizen, not a representative of new freedom?
Well, you're all a representative of new freedom by the council.
Well, the IGC, the IGC was representative of the nation.
Yeah, you're not reporting back to council. Well, I mean, if something comes up that you think that we should know, you're certainly welcome to tell us. But the IGC committee as a committee is dissolved. Pickleball court installation. We already discussed that.
Yeah, nothing until we do a site development.
Personnel, we're gonna have a executive session. Public safety, you've already touched on multiple things. The signs are in, or they're just on order?
They're ordered, yeah. But the radar speed sign at the, or, I'm sorry, message board at the community center has the radar module installed, and it is working.
Oh, good.
So it actually prioritizes, there are two different signs right now. Farmer's Market and the concert. If a motorist comes down...
Campbell?
Campbell.
Yeah, an actor.
Campbell. At over or equal to forty miles an hour, the radar, the sign automatically changes from the current message to say your speed is, and then goes to slow down.
Oh, cool.
And we can change those parameters and have it yell different things. It's challenging, so... Yeah, and the speed limit's thirty, so I just pretend over again that we can change all that. It was just...
That's, that's probably, that's probably...
Sasko Centennial Committee.
The only thing was, we had talked to him about selling T-shirts. I'm hoping that we can get enough of them that we can actually...
Yeah, can we do a little flyer to hand out to people? Just to tell them about the Sasko Centennial?
We probably can. I mean, we, you know, we could make that, that'd be easy to do.
Yeah, I could help you out there if you want.
Yeah, we could probably do something together to make that...
Yeah, just some basic information, maybe some old time pictures and stuff.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea.
It'd be good for the new freedom, that's because there's gonna be people around looking at it, so...
Yeah.
Oh, that's coming up too.
Seventeen.
Jim Hornstein's got a lot of old pictures if you're looking for old pictures of town and...
I could hold him and see what he has.
I'm sure he still has the...
Yeah, well, you probably have the ones that were, you can stop in and take some pictures of the stuff that's in the, yeah.
Pictures of the pictures.
Yeah. But then you could easily put it into a flyer.
I have, yeah, I have a scanner.
Oh, you have a scan, I got it. All right. So let me know when you wanna get to go, do that. Yeah, I'll bring a bottle. Yeah, I'll bring a bottle. Okay, anything on the council chamber audio and video?
They are currently still working on their proposal actively now. Um, vacation time's over for those guys. They apologized that they have gotten tied up with some major, major, um, projects. And they were hoping to get back to me before tonight, but promised they would before next meeting.
Uh, should I probably... There is, actually.
Okay, good.
I know earlier in the week there was some discussion that there was an oil spill on certain roads.
Uh, yeah.
And I don't, I think it's the trash, like the recycle truck.
Yeah, it is.
Because on our street and several others, there's like a big spot, and then there's a trail from like where they were sitting and then where they move on. I don't know if it's...
Is it oil or is it the juice from the garbage truck? Sometimes, yeah, I haven't touched it, yeah.
Oh, but it's still there, so after the rains you had, you would think if it was just the liquid coming out of the trucks, it would wash away. But it's still there.
It's been, it's been oil.
It was oil because they had a service truck, at least on Friday, because it was right over here, uh, by, uh, High and Broad. And they had, they were spreading their oil absorbent, absorbent, uh, material.
Yeah, it's all the way down, not used, so...
Yeah.
So that's all.
Down there, thanks, I was...
I want to go, I, I do have a quick question about that, but with the whole MS, I forget the number now.
MS War War.
How does that play into, like, if he goes, you know, three miles down the road not knowing that he's leaking? Is there any, what happens, I think, nothing?
Are there repercussions?
I guess, because he's saying it doesn't get to the drain, because it's just sitting there?
It would have to be, be if it's just drops.
Yeah, okay.
If it starts puddling, well, it has a possibility that...
Yeah, it was just...
What about the constant leakage, you know, like we have, um, you know, like, some of our pictures on here, that, that, you know, people just leave their vehicles sit and it just keeps leaking, I mean...
Yeah, and it washes down into the storm drain, yes.
Okay. I think, I think it's difficult for, for...
Hard to prove, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that could have been hydraulic fluid, that could have been transmission. Because all of those you would have used to be stored on, but that doesn't make it right or wrong, I'm not arguing that, but... He goes, out of the garbage shop.
All right, we're up to executive session is...
About the audit?
Sorry?
About the audit?
We just talked about the...
It was the, there was one, there was one for the financial audit.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, it was early on the agenda. There is a question.
One for four thousand dollars or something like that?
That was the, that was the pension audit. This is, yes, this is the, this is the general...
Fiscal. Why did it take them so long to get finished, or did we have it and we just kind of...
Nope, uh, it's, it's the same delay, no, this just came out. Um, the, the date down here at the bottom is June twenty...
Jeez.
Um, the delay is always, uh, the pension information.
Oh, pension again.
Yep.
Same thing with the release commission.
Usually you're into the first six months of the year until you're able to get pension information that they can incorporate into their audit. I will say that this, this audit, because of the new debt, things are, numbers are a little out, out, out of black there when we're looking at the overall, I don't know, picture of the new debt.
Did you have something specific, or you just wanted to...
Custodial risk, where custodial risk? Those being found, exposed to custodial risk?
There, um, local government funds are protected by that. They're basically saying because we have the majority of our deposits at, at People's Bank, that you're just exposed to a risk. But all of our funds are collateralized. Um, I think it's, I think it's accepted to, that requires the bank to take additional insurance out on any local government funds.
So we're not limited to the cap that is on a formal...
They have to have additional resources for government funds.
Collateral, collateralized accounts.
Can you ask the authors to make changes to any of this information?
What?
Look at page seven. Southern Police Commission is a related organization, provide services to New Freedom in Shrewsbury Borough, period. What happened to Stewartstown Railroad? Says when it was, it was created by two boroughs, which it was, uh, ninety-one. It says the Board of Commissioners consists of six commissioners, of which three are appointed by New Freedom Borough. What, that, that's all, none of that's right.
Was it right at one time, did they copy and paste or something?
Uh, we never had...
We never had three.
Three, that I know of, unless it was when it was just New Freedom and Shrewsbury, but that's, this is looking like this is current.
Aren't they talking about nineteen ninety-one in this?
Well, why would they if this is to, our December thirty-first audit? It makes it look like that they're thinking this is current.
Right, I agree. Yeah, I'm sure they copied and pasted some of it.
Out of an old one or something?
Yeah.
And what, and do we, we don't have a New Freedom Borough authority anymore, do we?
Yeah.
And they refer to the...
The authority, but we still have...
I thought we did away with that years ago.
Yeah, there's other documents that say authority, but no, there is no authority.
Is it worth worrying about or just the...
Biggest thing in there is the front of numbers.
Mm-hmm.
But that needs cleaned up for future, as far as the police.
Yeah.
The problem's keeping the accountant is... Okay?
Executive session.
Executive session.
Please ask the one citizen to step out and stand again.
Yeah, do I go? Yeah, I have my keys.
That's okay.
You sure?
Yeah, I have the CPA afterwards, so...
Okay.
I can sign it real quick right now.
Oh, then I gotta turn off.
Uh, no, I guess, I guess that's up to... Did you want to add here or not? There, there.